So we're going to call the work session to order, make it official there. And today is August 20th, 2018. It is, we're a little bit late, so it's about 5:00 after 4:00. And I am going to have Mr. Flackenstein talk to us about these mics real quick. But first, I'd like for board members to just, well, we don't need to. I can just say all board members are present except for at least 9 and Betty Davis.
Hi. So new wireless microphones, they'll all have stands sort of like that, hopefully next 4D. They're just not there.
Newer microphone.
That's a good call. So I was going to use it as a prop, but this will work a little better. So on the front of the microphone, you'll see a red dot. That red dot just means that it's muted. Okay? So you press that once, it turns green. Then you can talk. When you're done talking, you press it again to make it red. That way, we don't have feedback amongst all of these as they're close to each other. And then if you ever see flashing red and green, that means that something's wrong with it. It's not connecting, right? And so you'll never get it to work if it's flashing red and green, and we'll take care of that. That's really all you have to do.
Is there one?
Nope. Instantaneous someone.
And just when we move to board session, you'll explain that?
I'll show you the ones that I'm.
Okay. That's a little different. Okay. And then I'd like to make an amendment to or a change to the executive session. I'd like to add litigation as a third item on there. Are there any board members that disagree with that?
Update, litigation.
Right, litigation update, yeah. Okay. So we're going to get started, and we have, Dr. Bishop, what do we have today?
Madam President, we have a couple of great reports requested by the board. The second one, we will follow up on the recess and what we're doing. But the first one, I'd like to introduce our senior director, Cindy Anderson, and she has her team here who's going to share with you a summary of our FY '18, which was last school year. And I know you'll be impressed with this. So she and her team are here to answer any questions as well. So please, our goal is student success and improving as we move into the future. And so please let me turn it over to Cindy Anderson.
And thank you very much. I really appreciate this opportunity to present the work for the 2018 school year for last year. First of all, though, I'd like, we had a discussion about who was going to present, and I think you're going to listen to me most of the time, but I'd like my team to stand and just be recognized, my administrative team. So just know that the work we've done in special education can't be done without the support of the board, the support of our administration, and the support of the other departments here, and of course, the work that's done at the schools. So as you look at the first slide, you just see a huge plethora of different things that we do within our department that support special education and student services. We have preschool, elementary, secondary related services. We have compliance. We have lots to do with budget. We have a lot of records. And so I'm going to be covering each of these components as part of the presentation. So just a few facts about what we do, we did last year. We served 8,569 students with disabilities. Now, understanding we don't have that total sitting in our schools, but because we have students coming in from out of district, leaving our district, and students who D&amp;Q or do not qualify for or no longer require special education services, so we have a flow of kids coming in and we have a flow of kids leaving, but the total students served last year by the end of the year was 8,569. We have six federal grants that we support and manage, and luckily, we have a manager to do that. And that totals 13.5 million. We have the 6B grant. We have 619, which is preschool. And then we have four other grants that are provided by the state to serve our students, and also, one actually serves the state. We have 15 general budget, 15 general funded budgets at the tune of about $101 million. And we track about 1,500 employees in our district. And that includes teachers, TAs, administrators, intervention coaches. We have BCDA staff. We have, some of these come from the grant, but many come from our general budget. And then we submitted over 25,000 claims to Medicaid this year for reimbursement. And that reimbursement would be our speech-language pathologists, our occupational therapists, and our physical therapists. The way it works with the state is we get half of what we have billed for financially. And I'm going to leave that to Jim to tell you how much, because I'm not sure.
Sure. Is that 25,000 claims, how is that compared to last year?
Do you know? I believe it's higher than last year, but please understand that many of these numbers are similar year after year. This is our first year to really kind of highlight or showcase the work we've done. So, but I would say we're probably claiming more because we did have more students this There are many laws related to special education, IDEA, there are state regulations, there's a state handbook. And so we have a compliance director that helps us manage those legal components. We had no new due process complaints filed last year, which is great. We did have two state complaints filed, but both were found in favor of the district, which means we had no action to have to clean up anything we had done. There are about 20 students that are provided advocacy by the Disability Law Center here in town. And with many of those students, we've cleared the cases, or some of those parents are repeat, and we end up serving them every year and supporting them, and they continue with that advocacy. We do have four students currently in private placement, and in fact, I believe we may be down to three. I think one came back and started in neighborhood school today. And then we have one ongoing legal matter in federal court and in our Ninth Circuit Court.
What's the private placement?
So in the Anchorage School District, sometimes our students cannot be served within our schools. Sometimes it might be working with Medicaid placement, they might have a medical necessity. And so sometimes the school will agree that education should be paid for for out of state. We don't have a lot of the private residential programs in Alaska that are needed. And so those four students are privately placed outside of Alaska. Many of our students are served if they're in North Star or Jesse Lee, some of our other residential programs in town. We provide those educational services through supervised by Dr. Johnson. And then also, we have a principal for the program. I know you guys, it's our special schools program. We also have our own small four-person records department. If you ever come back and you have been to my office, the door just to the right takes you back to an area with all the testing materials. And our four records ladies are out there, and they do a phenomenal job. We processed over 16,000 IEP packets, and that includes revisions to IEPs and that kind of thing. But 5,400 of those were actually signed electronically, which is where we're headed for this year, is to get as many electronically signed as possible. There were over 4,000 testing protocol packets done, and after an evaluation, we end up taking those, they cut the binding, we send them to a company, they are scanned, returned to us, we review them, and then they're placed in the student files. We had 1,400, over 1,400 initial evaluations, over 3,600 reevaluations, which means we have to reevaluate our students every three years. And so those reevaluations were completed as part of our process. And then 4,761 annual reviews. Also, as part of our department, parents can ask for records, students who have graduated can ask for records. And we had over 3,800 requests for records, which means we have to, whatever they're requesting for special education, their IEPs, their ESRs, for however many years, we have to provide those. And we do provide them electronically. We're no longer making hard copies unless it's requested. We really do try to send them secure electronic.
Do you want questions now, or do you want us to wait for the other?
Okay. We're going to ask questions.
So I'm just trying to figure out the numbers because it's, oh, sorry.
I'm trying to figure out the numbers just because these different things might mean different things. So if there's 16,000 IEP packets, the reevaluations are those people who've been, students who've been evaluated internally, because if they have to do it every three years, then it doesn't add up to 16,000. So are there some students who are evaluated externally, or how does that work? So your total processing, you're going to have to separate that, that total is processing. We didn't include any of the revisions. So if I have an IEP where my student has met their goals and objectives, and I have to go back in and revise the IEP, I wouldn't do an annual review. I would just go in and revise that one piece. But we still have to send an invitation. We still have to complete the paperwork in the system. And then we still have to do a prior written notice saying what action we are taking. So those are part of those packets, but they're not included in the total numbers.
So those kind of take place in the evaluation?
So the evaluation process, the reevaluation, is separate from the IEP process. The reevaluation is required every three years. Now, if a student comes in from out of district, we can choose to accept that out-of-district evaluation, or we have to reevaluate. So what ends up happening, our goal is to determine if the student continues to need special education services. They continue to qualify, and they continue to need special education services. We also have a certification area of ECDD developmental delay, and that can only go through age nine, and so, up to age nine, sorry. And so we would have to, if we were going to look at a new certification, we'd have to reevaluate then also. So there's several components that add to a reevaluation. The reevaluation is the eligibility report that then leads to us writing an IEP for program.
Yeah, Olisha. I was just wondering, the 8,500 students served versus the 16,000 IEP packets, I don't understand why those wouldn't match.
The IEP packets being processed, I could have had to process one packet three times, depending on changes needed, or new students coming in, or somebody exited.
They're not unique IEP.
Right. They're IEP packets. So someone could have left, and we did some paperwork for that, or they exited the program. So it's basically processing through that paperwork, but it's a very defined process with checks and balances. And legally, that's what we're held accountable for, is that process that goes through. So the main goal of this slide was just to let you know how hard our records department So we also have a very small tech department. We have one AEA member. We have one person doing a lot of the tech work around our computers. We have a lot of computers and student computers and iPads and things like that for assistive technology that they supervise. And then we have heavy support from our IT department and Mike Flackenstein. So a lot of the special education work around our IEP program, Power School, was known as TyNet. We still call, we call it TyNet Power School to help people know what the program is. So right now, one of the things that we have moved toward, which is a really great thing, is we're able to do electronic signatures at IEP meetings rather than have hard copy. When we had hard copy, they had to be sent in, they were getting, they'd get lost, and we'd have to get them re-signed. So now we have it electronically attached to the program. We also extended Migranet and Gifted to TyNet. Their program is now there. Gifted came on last year, and originally it was, "Are you sure this is going to work?" Cindy and I said, "You're going to love it," and they did. The other group that's added now is AEL, and they started this year using TyNet for their documentation. And what's exciting about that is that if they have student programs or student reports or they're writing plans for students, we can actually put the IEP and the AEL plan up together and take a look, so we're not duplicating services. We're actually writing the plan. Academic English Learners, which was ELL, English Language Learners. So that way, and even with the Gifted plans, we can put those up with an IEP, and we can make sure we're not duplicating services and that we're making sure we're getting the best services to students. We also put our ESY program into Q. And we have moved transportation forms from faxed copies at schools to our TyNet system, and that is then linked to Versatrans. And so we're able to serve our kids and get them onto their special education transportation much more readily, much more easily. We've got a better monitoring tool within the system. Our restraint and seclusion is recorded within TyNet. It has, so all of our principals or whoever's documenting restraint and seclusions can do that within TyNet itself. And then we are able to pull our report. We must report to the state every year, and so that report is sent in through TyNet. IEP modifications, again, we talked about e-signature and the other really great thing that happened this year that turned on on Friday. Parents now can access their most current IEP, their most current eligibility, their most current functional behavior assessment and behavior plan right in Q in the parent portal. And we will be asking parents, "Do you want a hard copy, or would you like to access it here?" And our hope is that most parents will want to access it through the parent portal. So it's really exciting to see that parents have access at their fingertips to all of their documents.
Can you also provide them their policy? You know, that we have to give every time you, that big, that.
That procedural safeguards.
Can you do that online, or do you have that stuff?
I'll have to check and see if we did that. That was something we had talked about, but yes, we should be able to link our procedural safeguards right there to the parent portal, so they would have their rights right there in the system.
Because I could build a house with all the ones I had.
I would agree with you. So one of the great things, I think, that the administration here is doing is getting out to schools. And special education decided to really evaluate how we're getting out to schools. How often are we doing that across our division? And that included related services, our compliance director going out, me going out, and not always putting it on the form. But we were out in schools quite a bit. So if you take a look, every school site had at least one visit. When we averaged the visits, it was 5.4 per school. And we had one site that had 28 visits out of the 36 weekly visits. So we were out in schools quite a bit, serving students, supporting staff and families. And we're going to do that again this year, because I think we, they were, myself included, I wasn't perfect about documenting every visit. So we certainly want to make sure we're out in schools, because that's the best way for us to support students and see what's going on and figure out what our best options for service. So one of the national trends has been that there aren't enough special education teachers out there. And so one of the programs we put together was the GETS program, General Education to Special Education. And what we do is we hire someone with a general education certification, and we assist them with 80% tuition reimbursement to get their special ed certification. We had, we currently have 53 GETS at the end of last year. And also, we had 30-plus supervisors, either our department chairs, teachers within the building. We brought in retired staff that came in and helped assist our GETS teachers to make sure they're providing good services, they knew how to write IEPs effectively, and really got heavy support. By the time, it takes about 36 months to finish your certification. By the time they hit that third year, they are really good at their jobs, and they also then get their certification. And we have an expectation that they teach for four more years in special education. So we keep them for a while after we've trained them up.
Yes.
What do you mean by expectation?
So we have a contract with them that they sign to be a part of the program to get the reimbursement. And so then they're signing on for four years after they get their certification. So I've heard a couple of people say, once they do get in there, it's really hard to get out. Is that true? I mean, would that be a barrier to people trying that out? Or is that, other people have come in, done their four or five years, and then moved back to general? So the program's been in place for about six or seven years. Again, our expectation is that they stay. But also, the contract itself, or anyone stepping into special education says they cannot transfer out for four years. And then also, there's another thing that says, 30 days before school starts, there is a review of whether someone can leave a special education position, transfer out. There's no stopping anyone from transferring once they've met their contract agreement and/or have met their four years in special education. And there are, of course, we review every situation individually to make sure we're, you know, there are circumstances, and we look at all that.
Yes, Steve.
I've heard the same concerns, is teachers have been in special education for a decade and just want to do something different for a while, or not being allowed to do it. They're being told they have to stay in special education, but they won't be allowed to teach.
I'm going to refer that to Mr. Hess. Certainly, when you want to leave any position, whether it's special education or in a neighborhood school, and you want to transfer, you actually have to apply for that transfer and sell yourself and interview and things like that. So part of it is on the employee for any, whether you're in special ed or not. It isn't, "I'm done at this school, I want to go to another one." You actually compete for a job. And so, but I'll, anybody that's been told no, we can, Mr. Hess, you might know.
Actually, Ms. Anderson accurately described the contractual limitations in terms of individuals leaving special education. Any special educator is, as already been described, is eligible to apply for a transfer. And just as the superintendent indicated, individuals have to go out and have to sell themselves in terms of their skill set and whether or not it matches the school that's looking for a special educator. And as everyone already knows, special educators nationwide are a hard-to-fill job category.
Mr. Thomas?
Dropping back a few years in this district, there was a period of time where people weren't allowed to transfer out. And in fact, people that had special ed certification that they had chosen to pick up, even if they were Gen Ed, were being placed in special education. So there was actually, and this is quite a bit back, I'm going to say 10 or 15 years, people that paid to renew their certification early, several hundred dollars in order to remove the special ed cert to avoid that specifically. So that kind of burn tends to stay with people for a very long time, and they're still sensitive to it, just like being frozen on a step and lane scale hasn't happened for a few decades. And yet, it's a deeply ingrained fear in the workforce. So there's reality to it, but I think it's historical at this point.
Trying to use my buttons correctly.
You can keep yours on.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We just don't get on at the same time.
So recruitment. We work with HR on recruiting for special education. We had, we did a lot of work around online recruitment fairs, Alaska Teacher Placement Job Fair. Related Services has contracted with companies every year for speech-language pathologists, occupational therapy, and physical therapy when necessary. There's a lot of work that goes around that, because we have to build contracts, and we also have to monitor the staff and make sure they're doing, following ASD policy and procedures. And then we also work with Human Resources for cross-training collaboration, reviewing applicants and interviewing applicants. And I have to say, this year, Related Services is almost full, which is not the norm. We have, I believe, one short of school psychologist, I think one SLP, I'm turning to look. And OTPT, we're good. With our special education teachers, though, I believe we have 10 or 11 openings still. And we are actually going to test out some, three contract teachers to see if we can, if this is something we might want to lean toward in the future if we need to. We're going to bring on three, see how it goes, because the one thing about a contractor is at the end of the year, we can let them go. And/or there's also caveats within the contract that if it's not working out, we can let them go during the school year. But this will be our first year ever to contract with special education teachers. So, but please note that, again, we're going, we didn't do our recruitment where we did a lot of travel, because we hadn't found necessarily that that had been as lucrative as we would have liked for numbers. And so I believe, though, I think just based on our numbers, we'll probably start doing some travel again to go do some recruitment outside of Alaska and hit some universities that have our related service groups, programs, and also our special education programs.
So I have a quick question. How are we on staffing for SBBS programs?
I have to turn and look. I think we are short three teachers.
We're short four, one at each site.
We're short four teachers, one at each site, but they have figured out how to work that out. And then we've dispersed the staff that would have been in the fourth classroom amongst the three classrooms, and we'll be watching closely and looking for applicants as quickly as possible.
So what about TAs?
I gotta turn.
We're full, but the TAs are?
TAs are full.
Good.
Okay. So one of the things that we have worked hard to do is provide the nonviolent crisis intervention training, which provides de-escalation, physical assistance, restraint training to our staff. And this last year, this is just one year, 470 staff took the full-day foundational training, 196 took the half-day refresher. So if you've had the full training, then the next year, you get to take the half-day. And then 38 staff were trained in two-day training, which included the holds that were necessary. We have 24 trainers in our special education department for NCI. We have preschool, preschool staff, elementary, secondary, school psychologists, and administration trained to provide the 72 trainings that were offered this last year in NCI.
Yes. Olisha. What's been the response from that training? Have they been using it? Have they found it effective? Do you hear back?
Well, let's go to the next slide. So this is the report that comes out of TyNet when you put in your restraint-seclusion data. So if you'll take a look at the very first line, total number of incidents in 1617 and total number of incidents in 1718, and we are actually down 356 restraints and seclusions for one year. If you'll notice, there's a few that went up, and significantly in early childhood developmental delay. We have a lot of young children coming in with significant behavior.
What about our training for general ed? Are they getting more training in de-escalation?
So the 470 do not just include special education. They are general educators and administrators. I believe security was trained last year and trained again this year. Are we working on it? So we have it available. So we had quite a few general ed staff trained last year as part of that 470.
And is that voluntary?
I believe all administrative, turn to Glenn. I believe all principals in elementary were trained.
Correct.
And if we had, I think, schools with specialized programs were actually, are more trained than others. Is that correct? So like Cassune Staff, the places where our SBBS program, they're additional trainings?
Correct. And? Those injuries, students and teachers and anybody, or have the injuries?
Yes, it's about, it does not disaggregate that in the system.
Okay. The increase in injuries is, but decrease in incidence, do you know where that's falling?
Well, it's interesting, because I think that one of the things we've noted is we are expecting our staff to complete incident reports more often. And I think some of the incident reports are more minor, but still, we're looking at that to see what those issues are related to injury. And we're also looking again at Whaley and our SBBS programs where the, and other schools where those might be happening, so we can reduce those as well. So one of the things that we do a lot of work with is community agencies. We have a great collaborative work with Stone Soup. We do, a lot of our staff do trainings at the ASAC conference, a special education conference. We work with Alaska Child and Family, Anchorage Community Bereavement Support, principally have provided trainings at the principals' conference. We, many of our staff are UAA adjunct professors. They attended the UAA Mental Health Symposium, and I would have to turn and look at who's AKELA. Is that Ann? Is that, I think that's our interpreter. We put a conference on for the state for interpreters. So, and within ASD, we also work on this, we had team members work on the suicide task. task force process and procedures. We have, we have certain leadership. We participate in all the committees as much as possible. So, real quick, early childhood, we were up 40% growth beginning of the, from the beginning of the year. We have 43 preschool classrooms and by the end of the year, we had served 820 total preschoolers with disabilities. And you can see how that is broken out in terms of itinerant speech, our care team where people, our preschool students actually attend daycare or private preschool. We had 85 with communication needs in our communication classrooms, 579 in our developmental programs, and 28 in our structured learning for students with autism. And then, we have a heart of hearing program and a deaf preschool, a preschool for the deaf at Russian Jack. And then, one student was provided homebound services. Within our schools, we have self-contained programs. And if you take a look, you can see that we have extended resource in elementary, life skills, structured learning and school-based, our SBBS, our school-based behavior support programs. And you can see the total number of schools, classrooms, students that were served and staff. And many of those students in our self-contained programs are intensive students and require at least a one adult to three-student ratio. Secondary has life skills, structured learning, and then, we have some combo classes because of small student numbers. We really are working to try to keep kids in their neighborhood schools where they're, with their neighborhood peers in the community as well. And you can see the numbers there as well. And these, just so you know, these classrooms provide, require additional training, additional support. We just completed, I believe it was 77 staff from elementary that attended our STAR training, which is the curriculum we're using in our SLC, our structured learning classes. So, just know that these classes are highly trained and supported. So, some of the things we've done this last year to strengthen our school services, implementation of a new functional assessment and behavior plan that was developed over the course of last year and implemented this fall. It is a much easier to use, easier to understand behavior plan. And I think our teachers are really going to like it. We also developed a new three-day TA training, teacher assistant training. And there were 12 of those trainings through the year. So, when you started out, you went to training first before you went out to your schools. And also, principals could say, "Hey, I've got a fairly new TA who's struggling, can they come to the training?" We ended up training 154 TAs. And we have our first three-day training for this year, starting on Wednesday. We also did PASS Intro, which is our affective skills program for middle school. And I think STAR, you attended the training, part of the training. And I'm very excited to have our teams implement the program. It was a five, ended up being total of five days for our PASS teachers and department chairs and TAs. We also worked with Sharon Azart in middle school, elementary, middle and high school to increase our co-taught classes, to increase our students' attendance in general ed classes. And then, our behavior team completed 40 hours of training, 121.5 hours, of behavior support out in schools. So, you can see that we do extensive amount of training from special education. Extended school year, we served over 1,000 students, Willowa and then Whaley and Trust Authority. There were 58 certified staff and 95 classified staff. And if you got to go out there, you got to see the massive number of buses that we used to transport students. And it was very successful. It was a lot of our administrative staff, along with Robin Harris and her team at Whaley, that did a great job of implementing our ESY program. Please know that extended school year, if it is on the IEP, we are required to serve.
It was very impressive.
Related services, please know that that's our school psychologists, our speech pathologists, our occupational therapists, our physical therapists, our adapted PE, our assistive technology department, our BVI, blind visually impaired department, our heart of hearing department, I can keep going. So, but some of the things that they have done is they continue the crisis response team. If there is a suicide or a death in a school, when they come together, they go out to the school in the morning and they'll spend several days if necessary, supporting staff, parents and students. We also had collaborative work with other departments on the suicide prevention and awareness, and then, the risk assessment that was completed as well. And we are looking to expand Medicaid to include psychological testing and bring additional funding into the district. We have a psych internship and we hired four of our school psych interns. They are now permanent school psychologists for the district. And we have six interns for next year and hoping to keep all of them. We also started teletherapy services for speech, which again, when we can't get enough speech pathologists or you're in a remote area and it's snowy, we can get you some services via teletherapy and we don't have to, kids don't have to lose services over the weather or other things. And we're looking at expanding that if possible for next year. We also have the Alaska State School for Deaf and Heart of Hearing. Luckily, the state funds part of this through a couple of grants. We had some changes to our educational interpreters, we re-classed them. And then, we also launched a statewide interpreter mentor program. We've also launched a statewide outreach team. So, if there are schools out there who need additional support with their students who are deaf or heart of hearing, we're able to provide that. We did a website update. And then, we have a great number of student activities. The retreat was statewide out at VirtuWit Camp, so all students who were deaf in the state could come and access ASL. There is, they use ASL, that is, it is a quiet camp, they use ASL. It is not, it is not an oral camp. So, our kids get to really practice their ASL. And the artist in residence is out there with them going through programming. Our high school students went to Seattle Biz Town. And then, we always do picnic and pep rally. And then, of course, we updated the services that we provide and we pushed that out to the state. And we support the state for their deaf and heart of hearing. We're almost done. So, Step Center, we do have a Step Center that does Aparent Connect for our district, but we also have, they do, they put out a newsletter for Alaska Connect. And that's part of our grant from the state. And we push out services and information about special education across the state coming from us. And I think it's a great outreach. We have a library for students, staff, parents to check things out. We can send it in our school mail. And we also are on Support Central, where people can go and get additional information about different disabilities. Support Central, our website on Support Central is expansive. If you look at the icons at the bottom, that's only a few. But all of our trainings, transportation information, any teacher, any administrator can go online and find information about what's going on in special education. And our memos, our procedural memos are there for teachers to read to keep up. And all of our IEP trainings are there. So, if you get a chance to go in and take a look, it's quite extensive. So, four really major projects this year that I think I really want to highlight is, number one, last year was the first year for SBBS. And if you really think about it, it now just feels like it's been there for a long time. I think with the work from special education and from elementary education and administration and schools, I think it went very well with the transition. We had some people who weren't happy. But I think if you really thought about it, it actually is right, it is absolutely the right thing for students and it actually has gone well this year. They've already been through lots of training and the fact that teachers feel comfortable with, even though we're, we have a staff shortage, they're ready to go and ready to serve kids. I think it was an amazing move to close Mount I and open our SBBS schools. So, if you get a chance, there is the Transition Coffee Bar. It was open this morning. Our students from our ACT program, Adult Community Transition Program, are serving coffee. They will also be this year selling ASD wear. So, if you need an ASD shirt or vest, they are going to be selling that out of the coffee bar, so you can make purchases. This year, we, I'm going to have to look to Jim, did we get the card slider thing going?
I don't think it's turned on yet, but everything's been ordered, so it should be working.
Okay. So, we're about ready to take credit cards and debit cards, so you can charge.
Yay!
We, we... I will have to teach our students not to allow use of a P-card. I'm having a little heartburn here. So, rewrite for Google Chrome. We will be training principals on September 5th. This program allows for students to have access and staff to voice to text, text to speech. It creates vocabulary lists. It's one of the, it is a phenomenal universal, universal for design tool for students to access their information from class. Teachers who have been trained on it have been very excited about it. And I know my staff use it for themselves sometimes when they have to hurry and get a report out, they'll use that voice to text. So, I'm very excited to get that training out to principals. And I know we've had over 1,000 hits this last year of people using, 100,000 hits? It's got to be 100,000 hits. Sorry. Thousands really low. And then, the last was our robot. We had a student who wanted to attend the Alaska Middle College and take a college course. He got too sick to attend and he was homebound. So, instead of using the robot for him to attend a college class, we set him up with the robot at home, a computer at home and the robot at Service High School. And he was able to attend and finish his last two credits by robot. And we're looking at how we can expand that for our homebound students, especially students like this student who's, who was ready for a college class. We were looking at how we were going to bus him there. And then, we figured out he could take the class from Service. And we were so excited. But this was our way of getting to him. Our assistive technology person spends quite a bit of time at home. And what was absolutely wonderful is, we didn't have to bus him and put him through that. We didn't have to provide a nurse on the bus. He was able to access all of the class information via the computer email. And one of the things that I think is so exciting is our staff were so bought in. They literally opened the door before class started, so he, because he was always waiting and the closet was closed. So, they opened the closet and he would go out and navigate the robot through the halls so he could socialize with his peers before class. So, with that being said, he was able to graduate. So, I'd like to show you a short video.
I was always told that not everyone will like you, which quickly taught me that not everyone has a good sense of...
So, this is why I do what I do every day and while my team does what they do every day. This is my 35th year and every year, I get excited about the new things we get to do in special education to serve our students. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Cindy?
May we have the team stand up again as well?
Yeah, of course.
Come on up. Do you want them to introduce themselves and say each of what they do? Would that be okay?
Absolutely, yeah.
Just so you know who's responsible for which section of that.
My name's Pamela Mominey and I'm the new Assistant Director for Secondary Special Education.
I'm Ann Curry, Director for the Alaska State School for Deaf and Heart of Hearing.
Hi, Lori Rex, Special Director of Elementary Special Education.
Sean Bernard, Assistant Director of Elementary Special Education.
Jason Halasney, Director of Secondary Special Education.
Heidi Feierhelm, Coordinator of Related Services.
Hi, Ann Paley. I'm the coordinating board certified behavior analyst for the district.
I'm Gordon Ikey. I'm the department manager.
Kendra Bartz, Director of Related Services.
Allison Schmuckler, Assistant Director in Elementary Special Ed.
And I'll finish. Paula Patterson, Assistant Director of Related Services.
So, I am the proud senior director of a very phenomenal team who works hard every day. And I have to say, they are an amazing group to work with. So, thank you. Thank you, Cindy and team.
Yes, thank you.
Madam President, we have a very quick, as we know at 5 o'clock we'll start. So, just a continuation of our discussion in regard to recess. We've brought back some data and some plans. So, I'll turn it over to the team of Dr. Mark Stock and Mr. Glenn Nielsen.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. So, seems like recess seems to be a popular topic. I know when I was an elementary student, it was by far my most popular topic. And as an elementary teacher, it was absolutely, one of my favorite things was to go out and recess with the students and connect with them. The first slide here, we showed you this last time, a little bit about the communication with interest groups. There are, as you know, some parent groups that have been forming and talking and trying to figure out how we might maximize or use recess better or more in the schools. So, Elementary's been doing some research on best practices. And I think today, what we'd like to do is acknowledge some of the constraints and talk a little bit about, about the research that they've done. I think first, we should set the stage and say that when we talk about recess in particular, we start with the time that's allocated for that, which is the actual schedule. And so, when you have time that's scheduled, the next thing you have is how much of that time is utilized and in what way? Because we can set out to allocate time for things, and then, there's the time that actually get used. And then, there's this thing of time on task, which is actually the student's use of that schedule and the student's use of that resource. So, those are the three things that we have to think about. The time that's, time on task actually refers to the time that students actually spend inside those activities. So, this next slide shows a little bit about the survey research that Elementary's done with regards to how it lays out. And so, at the top, you can see that 65% of the schools right now are using a 20-minute, 20-minute split. So, there's 20 minutes allocated for recess and 20 minutes allocated for the lunch. And you'll see down the line, it's not that exact way in every school. This does include our charters, so you need to know that those are woven in here. There are four of the schools that run a 25-25 split. There's one school that has a slightly shorter than that split. And then, there's one school, one of our charters, that runs a 30-30 split. So, 30 minutes for lunch and 30 minutes total throughout the day for recess. And you'll see that the schedule at the bottom that says lunch more than 20, so there's four schools that have more than 20 minutes for lunch, but they have a 20-minute recess. And then, there are 13 schools that have a 20-minute lunch, but then, they run a recess block that's longer than 20 minutes. So, that's what we would say is our current practice. That's, that's what you see, you see happening in the schools on an allocated basis. Now, the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about the variables that affect all that. I think some of the discussion with the board last time was someone brought up a question about, you know, can we guarantee that parents or kids are going to get a certain amount? There are some things that can make a guarantee difficult. We can guarantee allocated time, but there's a lot of things that you know can affect things. Andy Mergens might differ a little bit, but sometimes what's being served for lunch and how popular or not popular that is can change some things about how the schedule is utilized. Noon duty stations is always a problem. Our elementary struggle to fill those noon duty slots. And so, sometimes if you have subs in there, whatever, it can change the efficiency or the time utilization of that schedule. The staff transitions, things happen in schools. They're busy, hectic. They're busy, hectic places with lots of bustling energy. If a teacher gets delayed getting them down, sometimes the line gets out of order, gets backed up, and sometimes we have staff transitional issues that can change the time that actually gets utilized. Then there's individual student needs. That means we have kids who will eat in five minutes and wanna go play. We'll have kids then that the 20 minutes isn't long enough, and so, they like to visit at the table with their friends, and so, there's this... The school's juggling how to monitor individual differences among the students. Then there's individual school differences with how the lunchroom is constructed and how the system actually works that can actually change a little bit about the time it's allocated. And of course, this is Alaska, so we have seasonal differences. And so, you'll have issues with boots and coats and hats and how long those things can take that can impact the actual time kids get outside. So, you know, in closing, what are we gonna look at for next steps? Elementary and Central Administration have been discussing whether or not we can try to squeeze a little bit more. One of the goals that they're gonna look at is, could we go... We've been using 2020, right Glenn, as kind of the standard guideline, you know, that we've focused on, and you can see most of the schools operate that way. The question has come, can we schedule or allocate a little more? And so, we're gonna target looking at 45 minutes, which would squeeze a little bit more scheduled time for that. Work with the schools then to try to meet that. That's gonna shorten some of the transitional time that happens during the day. There are about 40 minutes in the Elementary schedule now set aside for various transitions, so they can squeeze a little bit there. Glenn and his team will work with schools to look at the efficient utilization. We have some principals that have it going on when it comes to highly effective and efficient use of time and getting kids in and out, what their protocols are, how they run that, so that kids get the maximum time possible. If they see a school where the time utilization is not efficient enough and kids aren't getting that benefit, then they would send a resource team in to support them with that. Our goal would be to try to implement this and come back to you or, you know, cabinet level anyway, and review after our first quarter and see how much gain we've made towards squeezing that a little more. And then Glenn's team will work on an administrative regulation, which would sort of put that in writing. And I think that was part of the concern, that we've had a kind of a guideline, but do we need to put that down as far as allocated time into some kind of an administrative regulation that would say to principals, this is what we expect? So, that's kind of the summary, and I don't know if you have any questions for Glenn or I, but that's a pretty quick way of putting it together.
Yes, Dave.
So, it sounds like the schools pretty much, it's the same lunch and recess time for each of the grades, because I know some of the schools have everybody do it at the same time, some of them have different grades do it at different times. Is there... And like kindergarten, it seems like they might need a little more, but is it generally the same across all of the six different grade levels?
Yes, and I think if we look back at the schedule, there we are. You can see that, for example, we have a 25-25 split, and then you see parentheses below, that's for kindergarten, whereas the other grades are at 20, because they understand the need for the kindergarteners to have a greater amount of time. And so, you'll see that, when I went through and asked of all the schools how they formatted their lunch, the only difference really was for the kindergarteners, if the third grade was at 20 minutes, 20 minutes on either side, so was the sixth grade.
Well, I really appreciate this progress, and that's really good information to know that could identify why we're hearing from some parents and not from other parents. And it seems like you're on the right track here, and I would like to see at least an administrative regulation that established a slightly longer period for lunch and for recess.
I wanna hear what's the very best, do you think, for the kids? So, if you were, you know, what do they really need and how... What would we need for that to happen, right? Do they need a longer school day? I don't, you know what I mean? I don't know those things, but what is best for our students? We might not be able to do it, I get that part, but to be clear, you know, and I know that's subjective, but in your, you know, we trust your judgment and expect you to be able to build that, and I'd like to know what you think.
My judgment right now, and having worked in a couple of different states and looked at the length of their days and those things, I would say, my professional judgment, we've squeezed this lemon about as hard as you're gonna squeeze, and if we put that extra five minutes in there, we can probably do that. I think as far as all of the expectations on our schools with a six-and-a-half hour day, I think we've pretty much maximized what we can do with time. I think if we go any more than that, I think there's an impact on everything else that we're trying to do. You know, obviously, changing, you know, the length of a school day is no easy task and not a big thing. But currently, I would say my judgment is, we've pretty much made about as much out of recess as you can get without another impact of some kind. Now, having said that, teachers still have that pedagogical expertise of, my kids are... They're lethargic, it's Halloween Day, they've been eating sugar for two days, and so, you know, now it's time, I've got, I'm gonna take them out for five minutes, we're gonna run around the block, we're gonna do whatever. Teachers make pedagogical changes within their day based on what the students need at that moment. So, that doesn't take away from that, they still have that ability to do that.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, well, thank you. So, this is our... Can you guys hear me? So, this is the part where we do our housekeeping, and I have several things that I need to bring up, and then I'll open it up to other board members. One of the things was in the Communications Committee, we were talking about legislative priorities, and we were talking about maybe a special work session for that, only because it is a very well-worth topic, and we are talking about maybe changing our approach this year a little differently. We've done the 3Bs in the past, and I don't know if everyone got the information. Did we send this out to everyone, Katie? Okay. So, we'll get this sent out to everyone. One of the things talked about was a preschool funding gap, and then on the next page, it was the Picasodum Study, the curriculum gap, IT maintenance gap, safety and security gap, bus transportation funding gap, preschools gap, and then any other topics as we would want directed. But I think it would be important, I'd like the board's opinion on having a separate work session just to talk about legislative priorities.
Well, I definitely support that, as we talked about in the committee, just because there are a lot of ideas, and I don't know that we can bring all of those to our legislators. I think it's important to think about what we as a board think are most important ones.
Other board members? Dave? Let's just pick red on this one.
There's so many needs and so much limitation on the part of the state finances. Yeah, I think anything we can do to prioritize our requests as much as possible, so we don't overwhelm, you know, I mean, you could be a long list of needs, right? So, sure, I think it would be helpful to have that kind of meeting.
Supersede ones. And we talked in that communication meeting, Dave, about making everybody, you know, something everybody could support, right, to make sure that we hear all the different board members. So, I really appreciate that, because I think then we can all speak in a more, a stronger voice. But I don't know what days you're looking at, or...
Well, I think we could probably, isn't there kind of like a little survey thing you can put out there, and people could select days and times that are convenient for them, and then we can go by those posts and see what we can do? So, we'll put that out this week. Can we do that, Katie? Okay. Is that good for everybody? And then you can just respond to that survey. It gives you multiple days and multiple times.
So, are we targeting, like, the week after Labor Day or the week after them?
Well, I don't think we're in that big of a hurry right now. So, I don't think it's like a top priority. Let's see if we can get something in the month of September. That would be my goal. Does that work for everyone else? Okay, all right. So, the next one I have, and we had talked about this during our, I think our communications... Mr. Roth? We had talked about the grants that have been applied for, for safety and security. Were you able to get any information on that for the federal grants we were talking about? Betsy DeVos has grants that are available, and we weren't sure if we had applied for any of those.
Through the President. There are two grants that we briefly talked about during the communication meeting. The first is, there is a Bureau of Justice Assistance Stop School Violence Grant that we work in, we were working through our grants manager. That was submitted, I believe, at the end of June. I'm looking at Lori Dennehy, who processed the packet. And that was for training, and that was submitted. I think the outcome of that will probably be a little bit down the road. The other program that we participated in was the State Homeland Security Program Grant, and that is through the municipality, the Office of Emergency Management was the lead actor in that, but each department could submit up to five requests, and the subordinate organizations could submit three to build that five. We submitted three requests, and I'll have to talk to Mr. Fenseth to verify what they were, but they were focused on surveillance camera systems, and we don't have a result from that.
Okay. And then maybe, superintendent, have we looked at any of the Department of Education grants that are out there that the new committee that Betsy DeVos put together on sex school safety?
I'm not sure if we applied for them. Kirsten, through our... I don't know if we applied for these. We are looking into, for our first, our mental health first aid, and another one that I forwarded. So, we're still... Please come forward. So, on the behavioral side of it and our training, just, I'm not sure that our, what we're doing meets what that grant is for, and you never wanna do something just to answer a grant, or else you're tied. So, we wanted the grant to follow what we do and see if it supported us. So, I wasn't sure, but it was...
Yeah, we did apply for the grant as a part of our mental health first aid, our question persuade, respond training for counselors, and around our threat assessment process that we presented on last spring. So, all of those are included in the grant that we applied for. We just haven't heard about yet.
Okay, great. I think that was... Does the board have any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you. That answered your question.
Are you sure?
Yes.
I'd just like to say that when I was on my DC trip with Council of Great City Schools, it sounded like the total amount of federal money was really actually small when it was spread across the entire United States. So, it's gonna be very, very competitive for these grants.
But if you don't apply, you don't know.
Yes, I didn't say... No, I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, hopefully. No, thank you so much. So, the other thing I have is, the Association of Alaska School Boards has an award that has to be submitted by October 14th. It's the Carl Rose Governance Award, and it's if the board would like to nominate any member of the board for this award. So, at this point, I'll just let you guys think about it, we'll bring it up again, and see if there's anyone that we'd like to nominate as a board for that award. Pardon me, hit something? An award. Recognition for Javelin. Well, we nominate everybody.
You know, Betty, being so long on the board and her service actually to the legislature and...
I don't know if I'm part of the nomination part, but I think it would be an honor to honor one of our board members who's had long-serving public service in the state of Alaska, not only in the legislature, but also here at home on the school board, which would be Betty.
Okay. Definitely certain, at our next work session, I will be asking for either nominations to move forward, or we will bypass that award. Okay? All right. The other thing is, there were some resolutions from Alaska Association of School Boards, and they were pertaining to, well, there wasn't a resolution for all of these, but the 2018 education bills, and one of those is the HB 64, which is the New Reading Task Force that the state has put together, and AS, it's supposed to be a member of the Alaska Association of School Boards. What I'd like to see, and I just need to get a consensus, I guess, before I write this up or whatever, but there is no resolution for this, and my understanding is Norm Wooton has been selected as the member of that group, and I feel as a member that it shouldn't be a paid person, that should be, actually be a member or representative of the group that serves on that task force, and I don't know how others feel about that.
I don't understand anything you just said, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, basically, this bill has created a task force to look at reading proficiency as part of the dyslexia, the reading task force that was together, and I don't have the exact words for the bill, so I apologize, but part of that bill is to create a task force. And so, on that task force, there's supposed to be so many legislators, senators, community members, parents, and one member is supposed to be from the Alaska Association of School Boards, and we belong to that association as a member, and my understanding is that Norm Wooton has been selected to represent us on that task force, and he is a paid, he's a paid individual on that committee. It's not like he's a volunteer or something like that, he's actually a, he runs, I don't know if it's that...
AASB.
Right, he runs AASB.
Executive Director.
Yeah, executive director. And so, what I think is, it should actually be a member of the organization, so a board member that would serve on that, whoever would be best qualified.
So, do you know how that came about? I feel like I should know the answer to that.
Yeah, see, I don't know how that came about, and so, that's the other question, too, is, I don't know that was voted on, I don't know, but when I asked about the task force, it was said that that was, that selection was already made.
Do you want me to touch base with Tiffany, the president of the AASB?
That would be great.
And find out what the process was?
That would be wonderful, but I just think if that's the case, it would be nice to have a resolution suggesting, or if we can do something else, and I think it does need to be, if the board agrees, that it should be somebody that is an actual school board member and a member of that organization, not an executive director.
So, there's no school board member on there, so, okay, and then he's not a school board, Norm isn't on any school board?
No.
But he does represent the Association of School Boards, so he talks with school board members from around the state very frequently, and... He's formerly on the Kodiak School. Right. He was on the Kodiak School Board for like 30 years, I think. But as the head of it, he talks to a lot of school boards, so a lot of people have access to him.
But, yeah, I just, I mean, that's just, I think it should be somebody, and it's not just anybody. I think they could be nominated through the process, who's the most qualified, maybe it would be a representative who's already meeting with other representatives, but I think it should be a current school board member.
Do you want me to try to get that information from Tiffany before we decide how we wanna move forward on this?
That would be good, thank you.
Okay, and I guess I, I mean, I don't have a strong opinion on it, I...
Well, let's find out how the process came about.
Okay.
Would that be agreeable to everyone?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so now, I have one other thing, but I'm gonna wait. So, what would board members like to bring up today, or... And so, what this, you can bring up a topic, we can discuss it briefly here, decide if there's another board member that agrees, we can make, turn it into a work session on that topic, so we have more time to discuss it. But this is our time to bring forth any ideas, concerns, anything that you would like to have a board discussion on. Yes, ma'am?
Hey, mine's, I don't know, it's not like a huge topic, just, how are hard-of-hearing students do safety drills? You know, you're like on a walkie-talkie, and I've been visiting around different places. I don't know, I don't, maybe...
I don't know, I don't, I maybe, the actual, definitely hard-of-hearing. But how do, how do you hear, like, the Alice drill? Or how are they expected to?
The adults in the room, there's like, on the fire?
Right, I knew the fire one.
We could get there.
So I would be really curious to know, just from what I've heard, you know, when talking to people about that, to make sure those students are adequately informed if there's an Alice drill.
Okay.
Or something actual.
Yes?
Yeah, to follow up on that, apparently there are a couple of teachers who are hard-of-hearing, so they don't, they can't hear the announcements, so that, that's another piece of that.
Okay, great. Any other topics for discussion? Yes?
This would be huge, and I don't know that we have the bandwidth right now, but the discussion that we heard from Shannon, can't remember his last name, about, thank you, Bigum, about the fact that, when he was talking about the ELA curriculum, and, anyway, when we, when we look at our school year, and you alluded to this earlier, Alyssa, the fact that we apparently have a shorter school day than most districts in the country, and we also have a shorter number of days in the year than most districts, and according to his analysis that he did, over the course of K through 12, that means that our ASD students are getting two full years less of instructional time.
That was actually done internally. Mark Stock did that research.
Oh, that's right, okay. Thank you.
Absolutely correct.
I would love to explore that topic a little bit further, and probably right now, when we're in the middle of contract negotiations, it's not the right time. But just, if, if it's hard for us to, you know, it, it ties into the recess time and all this kind of stuff. If we're, if our kids don't have time to absorb things, if we're trying to cram too much into a day, that is a discussion that I think would be worth having down the road somewhere.
And I thought maybe after that survey, the calendar survey came out, because I, you know, four-day-a-week, or all the different choices on there, and I'm not saying people don't everything, I'm saying that. But, you know, hearing what people were, were suggesting, that would be, maybe after that is, would be a good time.
Yeah. That's a good, yes, Mr. Donovan?
I would second that concern. I'm very interested in pursuing that issue, identifying how state law is impacting us, and what kind of alternatives we may have. So thank you for raising it. I join that concern. As to the calendar, I noticed in the proposed calendar that unlike this year, the, there's an in-service day that appears like a week before Ferrandu Friday. And I, you know, growing up here, we used to get Ferrandu Friday off, because it's, it's a great day for kids to go out and participate with the dog sled races and everything else going on. And if there was any way to shift that in-service date to Ferrandu Friday, it's only a week different, I think. I, I would be very supportive of that.
Through the President, absolutely. And I believe that we will hear from our community in not supporting that, if that happens. And so we'll go back and take a look, and that's maybe some of the changes we can make. That missed me, I didn't even catch that, but it, honestly, we will hear quite a bit from our community, because they come to like that as well.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I have a couple of things. One of the things I was talking to Dr. Bishop about is, where would we get money if we were to provide raises? And I think it's important to know where we don't have the money, where it would come from, and what would be cut, and I think that is important for the public as well as for this board.
Madam President, Jim Anderson has created some information, and sorry we didn't meet earlier, I was supposed to give this to you. So, some information that he can walk us through, what the, and basically what we're talking about is the opportunity costs. What, it's public, so the ask is over $50 million. That's a public number, it's public negotiation. So, understanding that the ask is over $50 million, and in the state for this year, the entire state only received a $20 million increase, it just makes it difficult to, fine, you know, we would have to, it wouldn't be new money coming to us unless the legislature appropriated new money. For this next year, they want to provide the state $30 million. So even this year and next year together doesn't equal the three-year, and again, that's not in one year, that's a length of a contract is over 50. So we're just providing some numbers, and as you'd like, Jim can run through these and talk about them, but it's, it's a good idea to say, maybe the system looks different to be able to afford settlement and things like that.
Yes, I, would the board like, okay.
Okay, so in front of you, I gave you three documents, I hope. Can I just give you two? Okay, that's all right, I'll go with two. One of them is titled BSA Increase in Estimated Revenue for the ASD Proposed Contract Costs, and the other is BSA Increase Versus the AEA Proposal. So the reality is, we did in fact get about $5.7 million more, one-time money, for this school year than we had budgeted for. About 50% of that went into hiring back 25 teacher positions, predominantly in secondary, that we had cut during the budget process. And then we left about half of it, knowing that we have seen lower enrollment for the last couple of years. So as we look at signing onto a contract at increased costs, we know that we average between 13 and 15 million dollars a year in deficit. This year it was obviously less, because they gave us the extra of 5.7. Next year, we believe, based off legislation that was passed, that we'll get about 10.7 million more on the year following. That still doesn't keep up with inflationary costs. So we know right now, or at least we're fairly confident right now, if all we had was current contracts across the board with inflationary costs, that we would still have a deficit next year. So any increase we have in contracting costs is only going to add to that. And that's whether it's one or eight contracts, or, or any number. So, what I tried to, yes, ma'am?
Yes.
So just to clarify, you know, we're getting, we think we're getting 10.7 million next year. And you said additional, but that really, considering that we aren't going to be getting the 5.7 million this year, it really only effectively is, the 5.7 million goes away, we get 10.7 million, so kind of net, it's only 5 million.
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
That is correct. And we also know that based off existing legislation, that was not a BSA increase that we can plan on for the out-years, but a one-time agreement that, that they would provide that increase. So on the two documents, one of those was the ASD Proposed Contract Costs. And if you don't mind, if we can start with that one. On the far upper left of this document, on the far column, I put what an estimated BSA increase was. You can see that we started with a $77 BSA increase, which was equal to the 5.7 million dollars. And then two columns later is the $117 BSA increase with two asterisks. And that's roughly equivalent to the 10.7 we expect to get next year for FY '20. So you can see that with the ASD proposal, which we should probably talk about in any depth during the executive session, as that's always a moving target, that we can pretty much absorb this year, and, and in fact, next year. But absorb means we still haven't made up with a deficit, right? So we're already going to have a 3 to 5 million deficit. And that's even with the ASD proposal. So we'll, we'll work with that, with priorities, and finding, you know, what are the areas that we're willing to accept cuts in. But, but by and large, I, I think we, we laid out what we thought we could work with as we start the budgeting process for next year. If you look at the other sheet, the AEA proposal, you'll see that this year alone, it's an increase of 25 million dollars. So we've already taken about half of the 5.7, we hired back 25 teachers, we have about half left, roughly 2.5, 2.6 million plus left. And quite honestly, we're somewhat limited on where we can get 25 million dollars. Our options are fund balance. I could list a couple of areas to give you some perspective on what 25 million dollars means, if that's acceptable. So all of maintenance, all of maintenance, all the people, materials, everything else. If we were to not do that for a year, that's about 22 to 24 million dollars. Custodial's about 21 to 23 million dollars, depending on gym floor resurfacing and, and things like that. So when you ask, where could we find 25 million dollars? We don't have a lot of options at this point, other than fund balance. We certainly are not going to have enough in fund balance to be able to keep above the 8% board-approved, lower-level limit on, on what we keep for fund balance. It, it would require some significant programmatic changes very quickly during the school year. I don't know any better way to answer that.
Mr. Donovan?
Jim, just so the members of the public watching this could better understand, when we hired back the 25 positions, those positions were cut simply for budgetary reasons. They, those positions were not reduced based on population, student population going on. We had a reduction also of about, what, 27?
27.
About 27 teachers, based on population reduction. So then we went and took another 25 teachers to try to balance the budget. So by restoring those 25, we just brought it back up to where we'd be still with 27 less to account for the population decrease.
That is correct, based off projected enrollment.
Thank you, Dave, for that clarification. Anything else?
So, I mean, obviously, we can't cut out all of our custodial, and we can't go below the 8% in our fund balance, so then we would be looking at paying teachers more, but laying, potentially having layoffs again, right? Or what, I mean...
Madam President, to the Vice President, just, just want to clarify that the 8% is not a state requirement. About 5% of that is an ordinance to keep our AAA rating, but the 8% is a board policy. So technically, when you say we can't go below that, that is actually the board's decision to, to do that. That is it. I just want to clarify so that you know what is state. State actually allows you to go to zero. They don't have a requested amount. But, but that 8% would depend, so I just want to be technically correct that you could, but we'd have to adjust board policy. I think it would be a very difficult sell to change the ordinance because of that rating. So that 5%, that 25 million that's in there for bond rating is really untouchable. Technically, it resides with us, but it has to be there for ordinance for our bond rating. So there is a little wiggle room, but it would also take governance procedures to change that as well.
And to clarify, for those who aren't familiar with how fund balance was developed, Dr. Bishop was correct, of course. We have, we are mandated to keep 24.92 million by the Muni, and that's to help when we do bonds for major construction projects, it helps us keep our AAA rating. The average elementary school, if we were to replace it, is roughly 25 million dollars. When you add both of those together, you're just about at 8%. So when, in fact, we had a school in, in years past that burned down, and because available funds were available in the fund balance, they were able to start immediately, instead of waiting for a bond cycle, which could put you a year and a half out, or, and/or insurance, so you can immediately start moving. So that's really where 8% became not an emotional number, but a more pragmatic number as to how much the board felt they should retain in fund balance.
Mr. Donovan?
So Jim, there is a perception by a lot of folks that we have money that is undesignedated or available to do all kinds of special projects the school district might want to do at any given time. I've tried to explain to people that a lot of the school district's money is, comes from federal government or state with very strict requirements on what it can be used for. But the perception still exists out there that if we wanted to, we can come up with money to solve almost any problem. As our financial manager or, or chief financial officer, could you tell us a little bit of just, you know, what kind of flexibility we have in non, non-classroom-type funding that, that we could utilize or, or look at reductions in? Because there's a general perception out there that there's a lot of them.
Right. Well, I can certainly understand when someone looks at a 563-page budget document, why they may not completely understand every page. If you look at Addenda, we have teachers that we don't know at East High, how many highlight teams they're going to have this year, but we know how much a coach and an assistant coach would get. So they're going to see, as they look through a budget, 10 million dollars unallocated. We spend about 10 million dollars a year in Addenda. About 97% of that is for teachers to do everything from chess club to cheer coach to, to other things. So you can't pre-designate in women, or even have that specificity for every secondary school as to how many programs they'll have, because you don't know who's going to sign up. So there are areas within the budget where you'll see some unallocated that's unclear. The reality is, 89% of all of the money that the district receives, state, federal, local, goes to personnel, and that's cost plus benefits. Of the remaining, just a little bit over 10%, the vast majority of that, although not all, but the vast majority is fixed cost leases, copiers, we buy paper, we have contracts to repair roofs, and all those other things that eat down, and it, and it simply isn't there that there's a 25 million dollar withhold, waiting to find out what we're going to do with it. In fact, as we look at IT, for just one example, their road requirement to reduce student devices is 4.5 million a year. It's just as a reality. After four to five years, they, they're no longer usable. We budgeted a million dollars for this year, knowing that we're 3.5 million dollars short, because we simply didn't have the funds available. So, the, those pots, if someone's looking within the, the budget, if they see unallocated, it could be whether it's curriculum, but we don't know exactly which curriculum yet. It could be a lot of different things where we don't know exactly how much it's going to cost with a detailed breakout, but it's, it's simply not there.
And I'd also like to add on, too, in the, in the general understanding, in our state, there aren't any local levies that are allowed. So you might hear other places have an independent school districts. That independence allows them to pass a levy to be able to do the things that that community wants. I, I want it known that our city gives 100% of what they can. We are one of the very few districts, boroughs, municipalities that actually do that, and I'm proud of that. I, I worked in a place that did not, gave less than 75%. So the fact that our local taxpayers through the city pay 100% of what they can, then other place to look, or grants, which we're trying, and other places, or that base student allocation, which comes at the state level, the state funds that, those monies. And so locally, it's very difficult to change that when we already have the 100%. That's why we, when they passed this money late, the 20 million, we really could have collected additional funds, because this, the, the local tax base is based off of what the BSA, the basic need, what you get. And so when they passed the state, our local taxes had already gone out. That's why next year's even given, our, our share is 5 million more, even though the state isn't giving that much more, just because we can collect local taxes on it. So I would, I always want to say that locally in our municipality is highly supportive of public education, and at the state level is where we find those changes are very difficult, because we cannot levy any more funds. because we cannot levy any more funds.
And I'm just looking at the two different proposals, and I understand, you know, you can meet in the middle eventually, but the one that ASD is proposing says there's a risk of laying off 94 teachers in the year three. You know, hopefully, something happens, but that seems like a huge gamble to even offer, I mean, to maybe...
It was purely based off current law. I mean, how pessimistic do Andy and I want to be? I don't know, it's tough. We know that we're going to get an extra $11 million next year, or a little over $5 million more than we're getting this year, but certainly, the direction the legislature was headed last year, when they finally reached agreements on the structured draw of the POMV from the Permanent Fund, gave us some confidence that next year won't be the last time we see an increase. There certainly seemed to be some momentum toward a permanent increase to the BSA, but because we don't have it in law, and if you look at FY '21, that's passed next year, and we have no firm commitment from the state to be able to do anything other than worst case, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it just seems like a gamble.
Truly, every year, because of the way the state funds public education, it's a gamble.
And I think the other thing to remember, too, is that they can give us and they can take us away. So, even though, you know, it's supposed to be a two-year, one-time funding, I've seen things happen that maybe wouldn't get that funding, so hopefully, that won't happen. You can count on it. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Jim? I thought it was important just to put that out there and kind of let the public in. More importantly, our board members know what we're looking at as far as what's being asked of us and what we would have to do to comply with that. Okay? I have one more thing, and then we'll go away to that.
Could that be one more thing, too?
Sure. There's one more thing here, and I kind of wanted to bring this to light because of the talk about our ELA review and how it was selected. And I think you guys, do you have that in front of you? No, I didn't touch it, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. So, I just wanted to make it clear that when we talk about the review of our new curriculum, and you can look at this, but what was most important to me is that our review team was made up of 36 teachers, one librarian, four sped, what's RES?
Sped resources.
Sped resources, okay. Two ed tech, three, or five ELL support, one instructional coach, Title I instructional support, seven speech language, two, whatever APS is, two.
And assistant principals.
Okay. Principals, three, and directors, two. And if you look at this list, I mean, it is a very good list of representation of first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, kindergarten. And I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, there was a process, and I, as a board member, actually thought it was a very good process, and I don't know how other board members feel about that, but I just wanted to share this.
Mr. Donlin?
I should have mentioned it in our last meeting, but during July, we had a request from the Chief of Police regarding how many security personnel the district had, and the administration did a good job of responding to that very promptly.
Thank you. Okay, well, if there's no other comments for board members, we'll move into our focus on staff, students, and community. And please remember, board members, that after this is done, we need to come back to the table so that we can adjourn to our next session.
of the New Year. And for those of you who haven't attended the Focus on Staff and Students prior to this time, it is a special time of our board meetings each month, twice a month, where our board members want to celebrate the people that make ASD great, and they just so happen to be our parents and students and staff, and I get to celebrate them. All right, with my script here. So, I would like to first start with the airmen volunteer at Willow Crest Elementary School. Please come forward if you're in the room. Wes Conley, Dustin Jennings, Corey Lentz, Nate Donley, Justin Ware, Kyle Easley, and Kathleen Winters. It looks like we have one of the... Wes Donley? Okay, Wes, come forward. How do you do? Thank you. And do we have Willow Crest support folks here? All right, come on forward and celebrate with us. So, I wanted to share... Here we go. All right, we have the principal here, too. So, during the last week of school, Willow Crest teachers packed up their belongings due to this summer's construction work. With minimal time to have the entire school cleaned out, teachers were overwhelmed by the amount of work that needed to be done. Carly Calise, a second-grade teacher at Willow Crest, called her husband, an airmen in Jay Bear, to see if he could volunteer some of his time to speed up the process. Although he personally was not able to help out, he called in some airmen to lend a hand. Quote, "The airmen did everything from moving furniture to packing up boxes. They brought boxes to teachers' homes, and they set up for the field day. It was a huge help." These airmen dedicated their time to not only make the moving process easier, but also giving the students an opportunity to interact and connect with them during reading time and tug a word during field day. Additionally, the ASD warehouse staff performed the moving on the request dates, including the weekend. Because of the tremendous effort and packing by the Willow Crest staff and volunteers, and exceptional help from the various parties, the construction schedule had been on time and is going smoothly. The school board administration and ASD capital planning and construction would like to recognize these airmen from Jay Bear who dedicated their time helping the Willow Crest community. Thank you to the ASD warehouse for keeping the project on schedule, and a very special thank you to the staff at Willow Crest who have set the bar on how to move a school for construction. We need to hire you all in a different job. Thank you so much. And you are then Wes Conley, or Nate Donley. You're Nate Donley. Wes Conley and Nate Donley. So, would you like to share anything with us, Nate? Where are you from, first of all?
I'm from Minnesota. Just want to thank you, Carly, for the invitation, and will come back anytime you'll have us.
And would you like to say a few words? You actually, were you present at the time, or just in the transition? So, how about a few words?
We didn't know how we were going to handle the end-of-the-year transition, and as well as packing up our entire school. So, really glad that my husband had a great idea to bring in the airmen, and that so many airmen and women rallied together for us, and the teachers. I can't say enough about how organized they were, or are now. And we get to do it again next year. So, thank you to the warehouse, too. The construction guys were great, so it was just not as bad of a process as we thought it would be.
Thank you so much for making ASD great. Thank you. Thank you so much. We're going to get a picture of all of you guys, so come up here. Come back, Coach Joe. Okay, and at this time, would Heather Woolridge and Jennifer Keeter please come forward? Okay, so Jennifer Keeter is on her way, but we're not going to wait, because we have an award for you. So, I would like to announce the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science, the P-A-E-M-S-T, are the highest honors bestowed by the United States government specifically for K-12 mathematics and science teaching. This award recognizes those teachers who develop and implement a high-quality instructional program that is informed by content knowledge and enhances student learning. This year, two ASD teachers received this exceptional honor in our state. Heather Woolridge has been an educator for 18 years, currently teaching all subjects for kindergarten at Bear Valley Elementary School. Previously, Heather taught kindergarten for five years at Sand Lake. Heather worked with the Anchor School District STEM Department to write and pilot its new science curriculum. In this process, she served on the primary leadership team to align the next generation's science standards with new curriculum, creating learning experiences, science notebooks, and science drawings. I would like to congratulate Heather Woolridge for this honor. And did you already travel to DC? So, will you tell us about that? And tell us about this award.
So, in June, a wide selection, two from each state, science and math, were invited down to Washington, DC, where we were participating in our National STEM Summit with leaders from our states, Board of Education, labor directors from all the states, scientists, mathematicians, and then also professionals within the communities. This was the first time ever that teachers have been invited to work on our next five-year strategic plan for STEM education for our nation. So, our input was being worked to, or worked into that projection for our next five years of integrating all of our different curriculum into STEM education and not just siloing it, having it be a whole-rounded education.
Excellent. So, I ran into you. Is Jennifer Keeter here?
I'm six o'clock.
Oh, no, that's okay. Yeah, our two folks. So, I had heard, I believe, I'm in rotary with a relation of yours, and I heard about it early on, about you winning this award, so it was absolutely terrific. So, I'll talk about Jennifer Keeter, who came in, and she's taught in ASD for 23 years, the last 16 at Cedar Park Elementary School. She's taught kindergarten through second grade, and she's a STEM site-based specialist responsible for school-based teacher training and support. Jennifer's a member of the Math Academic Alignment Committee, and she has assisted in the selection of a new mathematics curriculum, created academic plans based on Common Core standards, designed and implemented district-wide teacher in services, and designed teacher and parent information brochures to increase understanding of mathematics education. She's been involved with the district's science department for over 10 years, and has created, piloted, and written new science curriculum. Congratulations on your accomplishments, and thank you for your hard work, dedication, and sharing of your love of math and science with students. You two are, whom what, make ASD great. And I would like to mention that it is pretty special, when we think about math and science, a lot of times, we think of those constructs and those subjects at the high school level. And here in ASD, it is our elementary teachers that are setting the way to ensure that our kids really succeed and move into their future. So, I am so impressed, and do you want to tell us a little about DC as well? You didn't get to go on.
My wonderful parents celebrated their 50th wedding anniversary.
Oh, that would be, that's a good daughter. So, all right. That's totally worth it, and I would think that maybe your parents should take you to DC. No, just kidding. No, just kidding. So, would you like to say anything as well about the work?
Sure. I have to say, I had little notes, and I left them when I realized I was late. You know, this award, it's amazing to me, because, you know, I spent a lot of time, you know, trying to figure out how kids learn and what kids do to learn, and I've been lucky. I've had amazing colleagues, and I could spend an hour, you know, talking about all of it, but so many people that helped me, and really, this award kind of proves that the way I'm teaching is the way I'm supposed to be teaching. It's supposed to be hands-on, it's supposed to be student-centered, it's supposed to be giving kids time to learn and engage in their learning, and I mean, I guess it just validates that what I'm doing is what I'm supposed to be doing with my kids.
Excellent. All right, well, congratulations, ladies. We are going to get a picture with you. That concludes this board meeting's Focus on Staff and Students. An excellent way to finish it up with our K-12 science and math educators. Oh, it doesn't end it, we have one. Oh, but board members, you must not leave. Please come back. Everyone else has ended.
I can have the board members back, please, so we can move into executive session? So, do you know if you could move us into executive session, please?
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing uncontested student hearings, negotiation, and litigation updates.
Thank you. Session is adjourned.